Uh, comment requests we have at Sheriff's Department. You have the floor, sir.
Thank y'all. We'll be fairly brief. Um, I wanted to come and, uh, and talk to y'all about an incident that happened back on May 10th. And we could have had this ceremony at our office, but I know what we've got, but I feel like y'all need to know what y'all have up here in county as far as the deputies that work with B County Sheriff's Office. On May 10th, we had an incident where, uh, one of our deputies, Juan Gallegos, I know he's a smart guy, but he really doesn't know what he's here for.
I got something to say here.
We told him we needed him for the budget. But Juan, Juan, if you'll just come over here, I appreciate it. I'm gonna tell a little bit of the story about you. I keep it brief because I know you're bashful. But basically Juan stopped a vehicle, uh, about close to Normana, and, uh, the guy was, uh, in a crisis. Uh, we determined later it was probably from, uh, methamphetamine, but we found a hundred and eighteen grams of methamphetamine in his vehicle after the four and a half hour standoff was over there. But when Juan stopped to make contact with him, the guy was out of his car with a gun and then down stripped down to his underwear. Uh, he fired a few shots in the direction of Juan, and, uh, of course, he called for backup. People were coming from everywhere to help him out. But in the meantime, a little over five minutes, he stood out there on, on this deserted road, just him and, and the guy with the gun. The guy was begging him to shoot him. He would hold the gun up, his gun up under his chin and ask Juan to, uh, to shooting. And, uh, Juan did an excellent job of talking to him. Uh, it takes a lot of patience. In today's world, you know, this could have went either way. He, he was firing in the direction of, of the officers, and he was also dislocating randomly. And then when officers started arriving to back him up, he was firing in their direction. Uh, there was a, a real potential for, for a tragic event. But, uh, I, I've watched the video. I know y'all haven't. Can't really appreciate it without seeing the video. But Juan probably did one of the best negotiations I've ever seen out on the side of the roads for the moment. There was no time to set up for a negotiator or anything like that. That came later. But after, for that five minutes that he was out there on the side of the road with him, there were several opportunities where Juan probably could have been justified in, in firing shots back. But he, he didn't. He, he was safe. But he also used a lot of discretion. Because of that, not only Juan and our other deputies got home safely, but the suspect was apprehended and he was placed in jail without being seriously injured. There was some, uh, less than lethal force used on him. And we appreciate that. Other agencies, uh, arrived with bean bags and tasers. And so he was taken advantage of. But the main thing I was like, what we're here for is we want to present Juan with the recognition. But I want y'all to, to, to realize what you have as the deputies that are serving B County. All, almost all of these guys were out there. I, I don't, I couldn't count, but the majority of them were out there, uh, that night. And they did an awesome job. But, but I said Juan really, uh, he, he didn't ask to be put in that position, but once he was placed in there, he handled it extremely well. We have this, this is from your agency. It was your guys that were out there with you that, that asked us to consider this award. Uh, once we started looking at the details, it didn't take much to make the decision. But I'd like to read this, not only to you. You'll have time to read it because we're gonna let you take it.
Alright.
But I, I want to read it for everyone else because I'm truly very proud of what you did. And I want people to know that. Uh, this is a heroism award. In recognition of your outstanding efforts on May 10th, 2021, in which you used your training and communication skills to calm an armed, agitated male who was threatening serious bodily injury to himself and to local law enforcement. Deputy Juan Gallegos, due to your patience and performance, you were instrumental in preventing a potential tragedy. Your actions put great credit upon yourself, your agency, and B County. And I sincerely thank you.
Sheriff Deputy, if you could get one up here with the flag.
Sure, sure. Alright. Thank you.
Now, we're still in public comment. If there's anybody that would like to try to follow that up. I don't have anybody else on public comment, so we're gonna move on to agenda item number seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. The mayor has been charged by a breakaway violation on the day of the day, and also tried to commit the act of assault and rape by one vote. We're not being discussed publicly unless by a commissioner or county judge. Do you approve this presentation? Have a motion, uh, second? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Um, well, I have my financial statements, um, attached. If you have any questions. Well, I mean, it's been a page five and two that, uh, left in here. No, we're, we're both down from last year, uh, but we're, we're still, we've had, uh, something like, you know, like in the year, so, uh...
There's no further discussion. There's no further discussion. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, pass without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on. Discussing, consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, adopt 2022 B County Resolution on Initiative of Financial Discretion Program, Designating B County Judges Authorized Official and County Auditor as Financial Officer for Discretion. Do you approve this presentation? Have a motion, uh, second? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? This is just setting up, uh, the process of housekeeping more than anything else. There's no further discussion. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed without exception. Agenda item number nine, approve lease agreement for county property, county property formerly known as 300 South Sixth Street, Skidmore, Texas, between B County and Upper East Side.
Please, if I'm just fine, uh, let me make a motion to accept this, uh, lease agreement because it is just housekeeping for a dollar.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
One second.
Have a motion in a second. Uh, further discussion? Uh, Mr. Keller, is there anything you'd like to share with us? Is there any questions commissioners might have for Commissioner Haggard or Mr. Keller?
No, but I will, I will make a comment. Uh, y'all need to drive by that facility there in Skidmore. It's really nice. They've added a few extra buildings, uh, all, of course, within the combines. Everything looks really nice. The fence, they put brand new fencing up now. Uh, uh, also, there's, it's just a really nice facility now. But I just want to comment on how nice it is.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for being here, you know? I, I think y'all were new last year, right? And, uh, so we're glad that you're utilizing your resources to benefit the youth there in B County. So, thanks, sir. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 10, presentation, no action by the B Area Partnership on prior activities, future plans, and funding requests and/or extension of investment agreement between B County and the B Area Partnership. Um, we have Mr. Randy Seitz, the BAP President and CEO here this morning. I believe we also have several board members, uh, Mr. Vasquez, Mr. Casas, Mr. Alanis. Mr. Fanning, are you board member too? Mr. Fanning? Am I missing any? No? Okay. Thank y'all for being here this morning. Not yet. This is, uh, this is a little early in the day. We're not done with our preparatory budget. We'll come in, we'll bring it back in a couple more minutes. Mr. Seitz, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, thank you for, uh, inviting us to, uh, to come give this presentation. I wanted to remind you that the, uh, the last time that I was here, I talked about our program of work. Our program of work is a document that we produce in the beginning of the year that clearly outlines all the things that we're gonna do for new industry recruitment and local industry development. So, we're about halfway into it, so I wanted to give you guys an idea of how we're performing. So, in the area of new industry recruitment, recall, we have a very specific goal that we want to convince 10% of the prospects that come into our office to, to actually come here for a site visit. And then we want to convince 10% of those that come here for a site visit to actually invest here in the community. So, today, we've had 46 leads come into our office. Out of those 46 leads, we've sent out eight prospect proposals. We've had eight site visits. So, the first part of our goal, we're about 12.5% right now of that goal, where we wanted to be 10%. Um, in addition to that, out of those eight site visits, we actually have one brand-new company that's investing in B County and creating jobs. That's NAFCO, and I'm sure most people in the room have heard about NAFCO by now. So, that's 17.4% of the second part of our goal right now. So, um, in the area of new industry recruitment, we're filling the funnel with leads. We're getting proposals into the hands of, of companies that are looking to expand. We're getting them here for a site visit. And then the community is doing a really good job of convincing them that this is an excellent place for them to do business. On the local industry side, we have a very specific goal that we will assist in, in the retention, expansion of any and all businesses in B County that are looking for our help and assistance with a very specific goal of trying to save 100% of any of the jobs that might be at risk. So, um, in addition to that, we plan on meeting with 25 local businesses throughout the year just to visit with them to find out how business is going and to see if there's anything we can do to provide. We heard through the grapevine that two businesses in B County were in danger of downsizing, retrenching, or closing their doors. We immediately met with the first company and found out that the rumor was just that, simply a rumor. Uh, they are having some space problems, which BAP is helping them with. Uh, but other than that, they plan to, to be in B County for a long time. The, the second business, uh, was rumored to be retrenching and, and, um, taking their facility in B County back to, uh, where their headquarters is located. Um, we sat down and met with them, and we think we've got them convinced that instead of retrenching, that they should actually put an addition onto their building and stay right where they're located. And, and we believe that they're gonna do that. In fact, one of the things that made them excited about doing that was hearing about NAFCO. So, um, in relation to that goal, we're 20% of our goal right now. We've met with five local companies, uh, so far, and we're gonna continue to meet with the rest. Um, the third area of our program of work has to do with the business of running the business. Uh, so we have a very specific goal to raise $208,000 in our public-private partnership. That's a mixture of, uh, county, the city, uh, the school district, uh, and private industry. So, uh, we're six months into our, uh, fiscal year, and we're about 43% of that goal right now. So, we're lagging just a little bit behind. Uh, and I want to remind the commissioners and everybody in the room that we don't charge for what we do. So, any company that we're working with, whether it's a local company looking to expand or a new company looking to invest in the community, we don't charge them a fee for, for that service. We provide that as a free service for the community to, uh, recruit those companies to the area. Um, and we are funded by this public-private partnership. At the end of this fiscal year, our agreement with the county in this public-private partnership ends, and I would respectfully ask that the Commissioners' Court, uh, consider renewing that agreement with us. In fact, uh, those of you that were intimately involved with NAFCO and know how much time we spent with them and, and, uh, and the money that it costs to recruit that company, um, I'd like to point out that it was a blessing that we did that in partnership with the BDA because the BDA largely funded the opportunity to recruit that company. If it were a, if it were a project in another part of the company and, or, uh, the county and the BDA were not involved, I'm not quite sure that BAP would have the money to recruit a company like, like, uh, NAFCO. So, the second part of my request is that I would, I respectfully can, uh, ask the Commissioners' Court to consider not only renewing our agreement, but increasing the amount that you provide to the BAP to $160,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have right now.
Why don't you walk, uh, Commissioners through your thought process and analysis on the, the $160,000 number?
Yes. So, so I've been looking at, um, best practices in economic development and looking at the way most, uh, communities in the coun- in the country are funded. In Texas, it's a little bit different because, uh, Texas allows the, um, half-cent sales tax for economic development. So, some communities are funded in 100% by the, by the, uh, 4A or the 4B tax. We don't generate enough money in B County for that to be a, a possibility. So, we have this public-private partnership where the public and the private industry come together to, to fund it. So, if I look at other, um, economic development agencies across the country, the best practice is for the county to look at a number that would be based on, on population. And if you look at com- uh, communities the size of B County across the country, about $5 for every citizen is what's typically looked at. So, if we look at that here in B County, it'd be about $160,000. And again, the, the funding allows us to do the marketing, the promotions, and, and to be able to fill the funnel with leads, to be able to, uh, respond to these leads, to be able to bring the folks here, uh, and work those leads, and then ultimately get them to invest and create jobs in our community. So, for, for example, uh, NAFCO. So, here's a company that does about a billion dollars a year. Uh, they do business in 100 different countries. They have 15,000 employees worldwide. And they have just chosen B County as their US headquarters for their manufacturing and their US operation, which could ultimately grow into quite a bit of an operation. So, between NAFCO starting out making high, uh, density polyethylene pipe to fire trucks and ambulances, I mean, if they're talking about 400 jobs, it could be, it could be 10 times that. We want to bring more of those opportunities into the area.
Thank you, Mr. Seitz. Other questions? Comments?
We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah. While I don't, did you want to say anything or any of our other board members?
The only thing that I wanted to say, and what Randy was, uh, discussing about the jobs. Uh, last night, I picked up, uh, the gentleman that's going to be the plant manager in this community. And on our way, on our drive back, he said their plan was bigger than what they originally thought. Uh, ultimately, they expect that Beville will be the only manufacturing site in the United States. They will have, uh, sales offices in other cities and other states, but they want all the manufacturing to be done in B County. And they're, uh, they have a pretty large presence in the United Kingdom. He says they expect the counties to be even bigger. So, we're, we're extremely excited with, uh, with landing that company. Uh, and I expect really big things for, for this community in the, in the next 12 to 24 months.
The only thing I'd like to say is that, that all you guys, and I mean that collectively, have worked so very, very hard, and all of it has been behind the scenes. We really haven't been involved except for the justice judge. But thank you very much for all the hard work and the, the sweat and tears that you put into this and the traveling that you've done, and, and thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you so much, Mr. Seitz and Ms. Vasquez, for the presentation. And again, just like Commissioner Wood said, for all the work. We'll continue to talk with respect to budgetary items as we get along. But we're just a little early on to, to really even have the Commissioners' Court, from my perspective, be able to make a decision one way or the other on that. As y'all know, we have practical problems and issues that come down from the state with respect to a limit on, uh, what sort of budgetary flexibility we have as far as increases, uh, on an annual basis. But our, our fixed expenses, insurance, uh, stuff like that continues to exceed the amount that, that the county has, uh, came up with respect to finances. So, every year, I presume, starting last year, uh, I, I look at this thing too. We had this conversation this morning, uh, is, uh, is, is gonna be a challenging year from here on out, probably till the end of time. But, uh, but like I told y'all last week, I support and believe in everything that y'all are doing. And I really appreciate all the work. And most, most importantly, I, uh, I congratulate you on the success that you've seen. That, that makes all the difference in the world. So, thank y'all very much, and we'll be in touch with Mr. Seitz. If there's nothing further on that agenda item, we'll move on. The agenda item number 11, and yes, y'all, thank you guys for being here. The agenda item number 11, approved intergovernmental agreement between D County and the City of Beville relating to the provision of health inspection and food handlers' training services for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Guys, I'd like to make a motion for the opposite to, uh, withdraw it in a minute.
Okay. To approve?
To approve.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have a motion, uh, second?
One second.
Have a motion in a second. Uh, discussion, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. My concerns, uh, I think that they haven't made us further this last year yet. I think that's in the works. But my main concern is item number six. The health inspector shall enforce city ordinances relating regulating health inspections, permitations from the city limits of Beville. We don't know what those city ordinances are also. And I, I don't, I don't like the way that's worded. I am the, uh... There he is. Would you please let us know what you think before going to...
Oh, can we?
I was like, that is real bad. What is going on?
Can we break real quick? And I'm, I'm starting to do this in the middle. I'm talking about, you have to get that.
Does anyone have my key, you guys? The prisoners are going to the World Trade.
Are we paused? Are you paused? Are you still running? Are you paused? Are you muted?
No.
I remember they did one percent.
Okay, thank you. Apologies for that brief, uh, intervention. And good luck to our Coastal Bend College Cougars as they, uh, travel off, is it to Tennessee? Is that where they're playing, the Junior College World Series? So, hopefully, they'll bring back a big old trophy and a lot of great memories, uh, regardless of whether or not they bring back the trophy. But I know that we're all very proud of their success. And our condolences to, uh, Coach Parley, uh, as well today. Commissioner Wood, I think you have the floor.
Yes, uh, Mr. Carver Hall, you and I texted over the weekend and you were gonna talk to us about how this has been working out and one thing or another, sir.
I got to text, but I don't remember that, but okay. What was the question or what, what is it you're meaning by that?
I was just, uh, concerned, and, and I understand now that this is mainly housekeeping, that this is for this year that'll end in September. And, and, and probably, uh, my motion is gonna stand, but are y'all having any problems enforcing these, the way it's written? Everything's working out all right?
Okay, that's, that's what I think. Okay, thank you so much.
My, my motion stands, so.
Thank you, sir. Motion approved. Any further discussion?
I, I think you were just, basically, you were asking about whether they were having a problem with the city ordinances and just to expand.
That's correct.
I'll let my second stand.
Okay, excellent. Thanks, Doug. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Carver Hall. Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Agenda item number 12, accept resignation submitted by John Blackburn and Sid Hall from the B County Appraisal District Board of Directors. I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? We appreciate their service to the county, uh, to the community at large, and, uh, we wish them well in their future endeavors. There's no further discussion. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 13, nomination and recommendation of appointees to the B County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Um, I will open up, uh, a nomination, uh, time right now, and I will nominate, uh, three individuals, uh, to fill two positions. Uh, the, the way this works is the appraisal board will fill the positions based on our recommendations. The three nominations are Thomas Mingers, Amy Gaetan, and Frank Massey. And we can decide amongst, uh, the three of them to make, uh, two recommendations, or we can, uh, make three recommendations and let, uh, let, uh, the appraisal board, uh, make their determination as they see fit.
You know, Judge, uh, I'll make a motion to make three recommendations.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second.
I'll, I'll second that.
And the reason I make that motion, these are all fantastic people. And, and Mr. Massey contacted me recently and said, you know, in the very civic mind, he'd like to be on it. I, I think by giving him three, then they can make the final, uh, uh, decision is, is, is a good way to do it.
I, I, I concur with that because I, I, I'm the one that contacted Mr. Mingers. And he was heartily willing to share the time to do that, so... But yeah, I, I agree. I give him three choices, then I choose.
We're gonna let the board decide what's working, sir.
They're, they're board of directors.
They're board of directors. Okay, not for the...
No, no, no. The appraisal, appraisal group is our, they're...
Any further discussion? Yeah, I, I appreciate you guys, uh, working to identify, uh, quality candidates in, in two to three, uh, nominees. Uh, thank you, uh, for being willing to step up and throw your name out there. Uh, and to anybody else that may be interested in getting involved, there is a much greater need than there is a pool of willing volunteers. So, whether at the county level or at the city level, the various school districts that we have, all of your local governmental entities need more help. So, uh, please, uh, if you're interested, uh, pick up the phone, call, uh, call anybody and, and we can point you in the right direction to see what sort of, uh, uh, benefit and assistance you might be able to provide. Uh, there's no further discussion. All those in favor of, uh, uh, making these three recommendations, Thomas Mingers, Amy Gaetan, and Frank Massey. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, agenda item number 14. Thank you. Um, nomination and appointment of county representatives to the Coastal Bend Council of Government Resiliency Leadership Program. I'm laughing because I, I meant, I, I meant to, uh, hold on real quick. Y'all, excuse me? Do you all excuse me? Apologies for the brief reset. I would suggest at this time that this Commissioner's Court consider nominating Ryan Garza, our emergency manager, to this government resiliency leadership program after reviewing the components of it and the intergovernmental nature, regional nature of it. I think it's something that, one, it'd be great for us, two, I think it'd be really good for Mr. Garza's, he can use to develop in his new role, and three, I think it'll be good for Mr. Garza because it'll get him into more direct contact with more folks in the region.
I'll make that as a motion, Judge, that Mr. Ryan Garza be represented in the, what do you call that, government resiliency leadership program?
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Thank you, both. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Mr. Garza, for your volunteer.
You're very welcome.
You didn't even have to show up to get Ryan to really know.
You're not going to make your. Doesn't matter if you hear it or not.
It helps when you hear it.
At least you know by the crack.
Right.
I can go through some pretense of asking first. Moving on, agenda item number 15, my motion. Approved project expenditure approval for Smith, Sekman, Reed, Inc. invoice dated May 14, 2021 for the Sheriff's Office New Jail.
Move to approve is presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 16, presentation, no action on the P3 Public Power Pool Electrical Use Budget Impact. Commissioner Wood, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, gentlemen, people in the audience, this P3 is the nonprofit that we have our electrical system set up through, they purchase natural gas contracts, and we get a special rate. I met with a representative in my office for quite a bit of time, about two weeks ago, and in the packet, gentlemen, there's some, I think there's five pages of the information that he gave me, and basically, over this time that we've been with P3, we've saved $312,467. Some information that, and I've scratched all over, so you can see my notes. We were involved in the cold weather, just like everybody else, and we figured that our electric bill might spike, and we were advised by this company that if we got something that didn't look like it should be, not to pay that, dispute the bill, and I know that the auditor's office has done that, they followed procedure exactly. The amount of dispute is $9,156, and it's classified as losses. And I asked Mr. Quinn, I said, what does this mean, losses? He said, well, it's line loss. I said, can you give it to me in some way that a person like me can understand? He said, yes. He said, if you take a glass of water and set it on the cabinet, it's full, you come back in four, five days, it's gone down about an inch, that's loss. He said, that's what happened to the electricity. I said, well, that doesn't tell me a whole lot, but I know it's gone, and we have to pay this $9,156, but it's in disputes, we may not have to pay it. The important part about the entire payment for that month, when you compare February 2020 to February 2021, which is on this sheet, there's only $137 difference, and that includes an additional $9,156. We were trying to determine exactly what might have happened, and I know the auditor's office has done quite a bit of work, and Madam, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this discussion?
Well, the amount of dispute, I know that they have the $9,000, but actually, our disputed amount is $17,538, and that includes the new jail facility, which is on Reliant Energy, procured under P3. So that is the total amount that we are still in dispute, so hopefully it does go in our favor to, we have not paid that amount, and we have followed procedure like you mentioned. The reason for the kilowatts, you see this little, nice little graph that Jen in my office did at Commissioner Wood's request to kind of get a kilowatt usage over a year span, and really, the bottom line is, I mean, this is all well and good and on track, but the reason was that we were operating two facilities, the Toledo Jail and the New Galloway Jail at the same time during that period, and so that's the reason for that huge, that's what I feel, that's the reason for that huge spike, is operating those two facilities at once. That's all that I came up with, sir, from pulling those statements.
I just wanted to report to the court as you're representing to P3, if any questions, we'll try to answer them, and like I say, he said, a glass of water on a table, and really doesn't tell me a whole lot, but that's the way he said you understand the line losses, it's gone, nobody knows where it went.
And forgive me, is that something related directly to the February storm, or is it?
This particular one is, that $17,000 is directly related to the five days of storm.
Yes, sir.
Because don't we, I mean, in every month, is there not line loss? Do we pay?
Minimal, minimal. And it could be, and I'm just saying it, it could be they just lumped this in as line loss, for lack of a better way to say it.
Correct, because, yeah, charging us for the max price isn't very productive at this point in time in the public.
Right, right. And for reference, he did tell me that San Patricia County, theirs was $86,000. So it impacted everyone. It didn't impact me personally because our electricity was out that five days, so we were not impacted. Anyway, any further questions, gentlemen?
No, I just have a comment that was noted on the news where the NAS Corpus and NAS Kingsville were like, their normal bill was over four times for that one month. One was almost a million dollars, I think, in NAS, the other one was well over $300,000, $400,000 for that one month, whereas it doesn't run that much. They budgeted like $100,000 a month, so. I know everybody got hit, it's just, we're not alone.
And in all seriousness, ours is $17,000, a lot of money, but it's relatively low, and he and I were talking about why it could be so low, and we don't have a huge power drain like a lot of counties do, other things that they have going on. Some of them operate water systems, sewer systems, one thing or another, which draws a huge amount of power. We do not. We have courthouse, we have the sheriff's office and jail, those are the two entities that use the most, and I think when we went back and looked at the payroll records, that Monday was a holiday, and then the next four days, we were shut down, so that reduced the power usage here in the courthouse.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention, and I know Pete Greer's done a good job for the county, and I'm guess pretty sure they'll continue to, and they're fighting this for.
They are fighting this for us, yes, and keeping us advised on exactly what we need to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Wood, for that update. Is there anything further?
No, sir, that's all.
Any other questions, discussion comments? Thank you, thank you very much. Moving on, agenda item number 17, approved independent contract or agreement between B County and Linda Bridge for continuing assistance to the B County Tax Office.
Move to approve?
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
Well, I just, I know we're still continuing on, I think my discussion on this part would be how much, where we are as far as, I realize she's helping us out a lot, April's, a group has helped out a lot, Ms. Warnick's was a huge help on trying to get this thing going. I'm just kind of wondering where we're at as far as all the help that we're getting, are we close to getting where we don't need this, or are we getting to where we need more? That's kind of where I'm at.
Good question. And Ms. Mattis is out this morning.
Yes, Ms. Mattis is out, and she's been auditing Deputy Director of the Tax Officer's Office, so we're asking for the extension as far as Miss Bridge goes, because pretty much everything is caught up, what we are lacking is basically Miss Bridge is going to be there to help rebuild true to taxation portion, and that has not started yet, but it is going to start, and we're asking for the extension to run until the end of October because that's probably the end of my tax rate, as we expect.
When is her current contract in?
Um, I'm unaware of that, sorry. I want to say probably the end of May with the other one.
Do we have a cap on that?
I want to say $7,500, I believe, is what it's worth.
Yeah, I believe it was the end of May.
Where are we at?
We've already expensed the first thousand, which was that initial contract, and I believe we're maybe $500, $600 into this new extension. That's just what we've been billed for so far.
The one we're considering right now?
Yes, to continue on until October, I believe.
So we're seven, I didn't follow that. So we had a cap on the previous contract extension of $7,500?
For this recovery.
And this is, that has been expended?
No, we're about $600, $700, around there.
That's it? Six hundred and seven left?
That she's expended so far. She, yeah, the thousand is already done from the first one, and she's gone into this new one about $600, $700.
Okay. Was that she, she backed up, or is that the only thing we're behind on, the truth in taxation, or is there some other aspect?
No, well, the financial part is done, there are like the policies, everything that we have in the office, that part is still being done, and Miss Bridge is helping, like as far as like doing a lot of the change orders and helping to redo all that part from Ms. Mattis, that's her portion that she's asking, Miss Bridge is helping her with.
The budget's coming out here before long, and that's what I'm.
But that's as far as I know, that Miss Bridge is helping.
That's what we're going to be in the middle of. If I could, gentlemen, let me tweak my motion just a touch, to approve this using the money that's available, and when that money starts getting toward the end, they come back to the court, because there's already money available, and I think to approve this without saying, put a cap on it, when those funds get close to being extinguished, then you come, they come back to the court and approach the court again, if we need to keep going. To approve this to October, only using the amount of money that's still available in those first two tranches.
No, I'm in my second.
In other words, we're not throwing any more money into the pot right now.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that, given the fact that the original funds that we expected to expand haven't been expended yet, I'm a little bit more comfortable with that, otherwise I would say, well, let's revisit it midsummer or so to kind of see how you're, but I mean, hopefully, and obviously, you know, please let Ms. Mattis know, you know, from the, from the, this court's standpoint, you know, we want her to, we want this role to be, this need to end sooner rather than later, and we know that the tax office has faced unique challenges over the course of the last 16 months, but we are getting close to that point where it's time for, time for us to be all whipped into shape and in the right direction, so.
Yes.
Maybe it might be, I think so. Yeah, I think, I think that's what we'll probably do, maybe, maybe we might wait till July and just get Ms. Mattis back on the agenda to come back and kind of let us know kind of how it's going, let the public know kind of how it's going, because the public in large part, they may not be as intimately familiar with the challenges that the IT issue caused, that the winter storm caused, that the dramatic change in our state tax law caused, plus just the general transition from Miss Bridge to Ms. Mattis and COVID. Don't forget any other, you know, once in a lifetime, so we're very, we're very familiar with it, but the public may not be so aware of all the challenges that the tax office has faced and continues to take out from.
And the hackers.
The hackers. Yes, yes, the IT issue, yes. So if there's no further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Ms. Carrasco, I want you to stay right there.
Yes.
Moving on, agenda item number 18, approved extension of temporary part-time clerk position in the B County Tax Office.
For this one here, we're just asking for the approval from the court to extend the one of the part-time clerks until the end of June. We did request prior about for the Adobe program to come in to help us with our, as far as being able to scan documents and not having to rebuild all those things from scratch. So we had some issues with the Adobe where it was ordered, but it was kind of lost, I would say, was sent to the wrong person, and so everybody, so they were looking for it, so we were in contact with CDW to find it, so they did find it, but we didn't get, weren't able to get ahold of it till the middle of April, and then we had some issues as far as being able to install it on the computers. So that kind of set us behind a little bit, so Ms. Mattis is asking if we can extend that part-time clerk for an extra month, just so that way she can continue to put in the documents without having to rebuild from square one.
Is that probably the Craig, did you all try to do it by yourselves?
The Adobe, no, Mr. Oliver, they were having trouble as far as being able to have a computer access to the program, so initially, we purchased it for three programs.
Let me stop you real quick, I have a motion.
We should discuss.
Okay. Okay.
I'll add a motion.
Oh, okay.
After the extension.
Okay, okay, thank you. I interrupted you.
No, no, no.
So one month.
One month, yes, I was asking, Mr. Oliver couldn't solve it, or something wasn't.
It was, they were trying to, Mr. Parkman was trying to do it so that we, because initially, we purchased program for three of the computers, only one of the computers stripped through it.
Let me drive, Ms. Carrasco, speed of process. So, as you know, B County is still on Microsoft Office 7, is that right?
Windows 7.
Windows 7, thank you. We're on Windows 7. Adobe, Adobe Acrobat, the, what we bought, Adobe is all electronic now, and they operate on a Windows 10 platform, so because the computers that are available in the tax office are on the Windows 7 platform, we couldn't use, we couldn't, we couldn't access the program, the operating system couldn't work, that is all being resolved with the acquisition of Defender APP, the new security program that was recommended to us by our loss analysis specialists with respect to the IT issue. The package that we bought includes licenses for Windows 10, so we're rolling through, we're getting, we're prioritizing the tax office to get their computers up and running, and as soon as they have Windows 10, that they have Adobe Acrobat. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Please continue.
Yes, sir. So we're asking just for the extension for another month, since we've lost time on being able to use that program for our advantage.
And how much did it cost for that, one month?
An addition.
Her wages for a month, am I correct?
Yes, sir. She is part-time.
Who is that part-time now?
Inez Gola.
I'm not sure what she has, I didn't come with that information.
I'll make a motion to approve one month extension.
I have a motion in a second. Further discussion? And again, this is one of those things where it's, like I said before, it's sort of a little half-division, it's about time to cut loose these extra strings and have the tax office back running. We'll steam ahead with the staff that Jen has up there. You definitely have our support, Ms. Mattis, and we want her to succeed, the entire county wants her to succeed. She pays all of our bills. Why doesn't she pay all of our bills? She receives the funds.
Yeah, she collects the money.
Further discussion, all those in favor, I might know, right? This is a short political career, this is fun, I'd like to thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Ms. Carrasco, for being here this morning. Just moving on to agenda item number 19, presentation by B County Auditor of Bank Depository Bid Process and Recommendation of Preferred Vendor and Possible Approver of Vendor as Bank Depository Institution. So in this instance, we're going to start with the presentation by the auditor and upon receipt of their recommendation, we move forward. Madam Auditor, you have the floor.
Well, the auditor's office received two viable bids for our depository, per statute we have to go out every five years for a depository, for our public fund, and we received two, and my recommendation would be to continue with our depository, referred to Texas, but I've also included a recommendation letter from our investment advisor, Mr. Carter, that has a little bit further information to share with the court.
Maybe I need to look at that later.
Maybe I need to look at that later.
Just wing it, Ms. Carrasco.
I will. Okay. I made the two-part recommendation. And the first part is to engage with Spirit of Texas Bank, contingent on clarification of the collateral that would be posted under the agreement. And the second part is to establish a protocol in the auditor's office, which I can help with pretty easily, to basically examine the collateral report on a, you know, on a monthly basis when it comes in. And to have two people look at it, so it's, and it doesn't matter if two, two people, we'll strain all of them there. I mean, they all got the COVID protocol, they can get this, okay? And it's take about two minutes, a minute, and each other look at it, check two or three things on Matrix, and hand it to the other one. And somebody images it and puts it in the directory in the file, so that here it is when the auditor's come. And April said she kind of appreciates that because that's something that maybe they don't have enough protocols written down, but.
We should.
Yeah, they should, because the job of the auditor's office is to make sure that everybody in the auditor's office is safety, safety in principle. And so that's what we're looking for. And it will, it's something that, that by prescribing it, it can happen faster than it is by, you know, not having that in the prescriptions or protocol.
So with respect to the recommendation, the recommendation is to approve Spirit of Texas Bank?
Yes, and continue on.
On us getting, we got a response back on, tried to clarify someone, it was not the signature on the bid. And so I don't want to be ambiguous on the issue.
And I will, I will have that correspondence with the bank and make sure that we have this. And this is just a collateral report, they already have it. It's just for me to get it and initially to make sure that our securities are in line with our investment policy.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Carter. Does anybody have any questions? Any like me to explain the collateral issue?
No, but they were already, so they were both scored, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
There were, yeah, they were both bid on, responded to the same question.
I'll shine some brief light on that. Policy that we wish to follow requires securities that are diversified, those two things are very critical. Okay, that's in accordance. And the option under law is, it's your pleasure. Pleasure, of course. And y'all express that in the adopted vessel.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Do I have a motion to approve this selection of Spirit of Texas?
I'll make a motion to discuss.
That was on the last.
Was that on the last?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the auditor's recommendation for Spirit of Texas Bank.
I have a motion, I'll second. I'll second, and you're including the protocol you established.
Yes, also including the protocol by Mr. Carrasco.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you for being here. Moving on to agenda item number twenty, approval of continuation of insurance policies for county property with the Texas Association of Counties based on tax proposed renewal package for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Misses Chan, too, why don't you make it? I don't want to do it.
I was prepared for that one.
It's okay, just tell them it's going up. It's imperfect, it's a difficult situation, but overall, our.
Overall, we have to protect our property.
Yeah.
Yes, it did go up. The past, this is, this current year, it went up the additional twenty, because last year we saw a twenty-five thousand dollar increase. This year it's twenty, so that is the full portion of the new jail. And that is what we had discussed a couple of years ago, that our insurance would increase. So now we're at the highest we can be, and we'll go forward with that ceiling of the new year. We were already informed.
We're informed.
Yes, sir.
You know, in all terms, this is best insurance money you can buy. These folks have been fantastic, when you've got a claim, I have no problem with them.
We have all of the resources, all of the, I mean, any question we have, they're ready to assist us, our claims, anything. And they're ready to pay forward for our losses. So we have had no issues.
On that note, I'll make a motion to approve. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, further discussion? Or is that just?
That was almost a second.
It was, no?
Almost a second.
Sure to buy on that one. Thank you, by Commissioner Lenny. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number one, approved memorandum of understanding between the B County Sheriff and the B Bill Independent School District regarding the use of a white two thousand and ten Chevy Tahoe. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I don't know, Chief Deputy Jones, is, does the Commissioner's Court have any desire or interest?
I think it's just the loaner who's all dead.
Vehicles about to be auctioned. We're going to auction off one of our old vehicles with, you know, and we have, given the county, or left county, their agents use vehicles, it's not one of those vehicles. This vehicle basically being pro, at the high school for law enforcement students. Been wanting to do this for several years. Like, the high school right now, they have their ambulance, and one of their classes works out well. This is for law enforcement students to be able to come and be a, like, do whatever, to cover. The drone is.
Thank you, Chief Deputy.
For purposes, we're out. You think we can do that? Educate our students.
That's a great point, Commissioner, I heard it is. And thank you, Sheriff and Chief Deputy for partnering with.
They want to do it for years, just create PR for the county. I think so, it's great to be on.
Any further comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, agenda item number twenty-two, approved grant management policies and procedures manual for the B County Sheriff's Office by the B County Sheriff's Office and the B County Auditor's Office. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I can tell you in general, this is tied to a grant. Is it stone?
Step.
It's step.
Step.
So it's a necessary component that's put together. So is there any other discussion, comments, questions? No? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number twenty-three, reduce COVID nineteen temporary employment positions effective May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, being B County COVID, B County's COVID nineteen screeners, and being a total of three positions. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Mr. Willow, you'd like to address the court?
If there's no further discussion, no, sir.
I don't, does anybody have any questions, or it's pretty straightforward, or just sort of?
I do have a question. Deputy Salas asked me to, while we're doing this, do we unlock the doors? Because as it was, it was only two doors. There's Deputy Salas, we could ask her recommendation.
Well, please.
Almost, but you were getting out, didn't you?
That's why we're gonna, the answer is.
I'm sorry.
What was the question?
About unlocking the doors?
Yes, if we get rid of the temperature takers, are we gonna open up the door? Are all doors being unlocked?
I'll have to take that under advisement in that particular instance. That's a resolution by the board, and it's not on the agenda of the specificity, so it's not something that we can address at this time. But it is something that we will ultimately address. Thank you, it's a great, great issue to bring up and a great.
In coordination with the district judges, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
One thing I would like to add, though, the records that we have on all the people tested need to be preserved. And Deputy Salas is, in case we need to go back to those for any reason whatsoever, all the records need to go to her.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. And, Mr. Willow, I'm sorry, I didn't say this in session, but please extend on behalf of the entire Commissioner's Court our sincere gratitude and thanks to our COVID screeners, the ones that were with us initially, the ones that are with us now at the Lurchville Bank's job. But we do appreciate it.
One other thing, these equipment, the temperature guns and all, I'm thinking they should go to Deputy Salas also, too.
Yes, sir.
For safekeeping at this point in time, from all the different entities going to her.
Moving on, agenda item number twenty-four, authorized solicitation of administrative services in connection with the B County Multi-Mitigation Plan, five-year renewal. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Willow, do you have a presentation you'd like to?
Is this emergency? Yeah, mitigation. Okay, is the emergency coordinator going to present it, or?
Sure, I'd like that.
The mitigation action plan.
You can do it from there.
Yeah, I'm gonna come over here. Do you have a paperwork?
No, no paperwork.
You all have copies of what they submitted, correct?
All we got.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't think there was very many changes, correct?
Well, what this is, if I may, what this is, is every five years, we have to update our mitigation action plan according to FEMA's guidelines. And we are four years into this mitigation plan. So we want to put in for a grant to pay for the writing of the update of the new mitigation plan. And it needs to be updated, like I informed the court earlier during comments, three grants were awarded to the city that allows them to redo some low water crossing. Well, naturally, we want to take those off the mitigation and find new areas for mitigation. And that's what this is all about, just to find out who can write it for us and put them in.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. We don't have any items for executive session today. Move on to agenda item number twenty-five, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I've got a second. All those in favor? Aye, all opposed?
And the ARP, or A, whatever it is, is going to have a meeting immediately after this meeting.
I'm supposed to know.
This whole time, those are.
Oh, oh, I was like, are you breaking?
Oh, no, I don't need ARP.
So y'all got a meeting here?
We'll let you attend the ARP.
Yeah, there you go.
I get a kickback when everybody's on.
I get another free coupon to a blue plate dinner.
I'll sign up for one of those.